Good evening, it's seven o'clock, I'm going to call to order this hybrid meeting of the Town of Southwood Planning Board. Today is Tuesday, August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. We are meeting in person at the Southwood Town Hall at four fifty-four College Highway. We're open for Zoom participation and are recording the meeting. It is okay if you do so as well, you just need to let us know that you are. Hearing none, we'll do a quick roll call introduction.
Excuse me, Alvin Allen, Town Planner.
Secretary. Renee, our secretary. Jessica Thornton, Chairperson.
Diane Jesba, member.
Jason Brunel, member.
Marcus Phelps, member.
Giovanni Alsop, Associate, Member.
Okay. First on the agenda is the Town Planner's Report.
Okay, I have a brief report, we have no new items to queue for the next meeting. I'll move the deadline for the next meeting, which we sometimes remind you to be next Friday, August twenty-second. Second item. I've received several calls over the last few weeks in regards to A U's, you know, is there an application, is there a process? We currently have no application. So I've been just going to tell the folks, you know, you want a petition for one, just put on a cover letter stating your intent. Then also, it's kind of going through our A U bylaws answering the questions per what we have on our our e-codes. So it's my essentially what I'm looking to do is create a new application that I can provide to you guys on September ninth to review and roll it out to the public if you say choose. Those are the items that I have for the Town Plan.
Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda is public comment. If there is anybody here in the room that has a comment for something that is not already listed on the agenda for this evening, please raise your hand or speak up online, use the hand raise function. Hearing none. We will move on. We do have some time in between when we can start our next public hearing at seven oh five. So we will move on to our first discussion item, which is the Planning Board's review and revaluation of subdivision infrastructure security for Noble Steed Crossing subdivision. Good evening.
Evening. Jesse Saltmish, Noble Steed. So I have an updated work schedule here. I took these.
Thank you.
Um, so since the last meeting, we, we have water quality basin number three completed. And that was the last other than the crossing area and the wetland replication, that was the last spot that is in any wetland areas that needed to be constructed. So all the other work other than the crossing and the wetland replication area is you know, outside of the wetland buffers, buffer zones.
Okay.
And we finished backfilling all the curves and, and conceded all that stuff. And we're currently working on while we were building water quality basin number three, because that is adjacent to the the crossing, we started building out the road a little bit earlier. So I know that wasn't on the on the original work list, but that, that we were completing that work as we were building water quality basin, and we still have some more filler, fill in there to kind of rough shape the roadway to bring it in. So that's why some of these items weren't, on my original work schedule, weren't addressed. Because we're working on that section of it. But moving forward, I, I put some final date or hard dates on here to complete the sidewalks up to the crossing area. Because we, we still haven't got our final approval for the four oh one water quality permit. Yet we do have, we did receive a letter back from the National Endangered Species. I, I don't know the, the letters for it, but approving, approving our, our
Design.
Design to move forward. Our next step is waiting, we're waiting for a letter from the Army Corps of Engineers. Once we receive that, then we get our final approval from Mass D E P and they'll issue our permit. Then that's how I understand it from, you know, Steve and Jeff, last time I spoke with them. So with that being said, and then another thing, the conservation restriction is getting kicked back and forth between the Town Attorney and the State's Attorney. And there, the one thing that's left is the a title certification for the open space, which I, I just talked to John about today. We're, I'm requesting that my lawyer do the title search for that. And once I get that back, I'll submit that to John or, oh yeah, and sorry. I'm so used to giving, but I'll give that to Alvin and he'll submit that to the attorneys and we should get the, be able to have that signed off on. And we can circulate that for signatures at that point. Um, and then so the remaining work other than the crossing and wetland replication, we have this, the sidewalk installs up to the crossing area. Which I have a couple hundred feet left on the upper side. And maybe about seventy-five feet on the lower side. And then I have a couple drainage connections I need to make on the upper section. And then what I wanted to do before you know, the paving season ends is we're going to pave the first nine hundred and nine hundred, nine hundred and fifty feet of the roadway, which brings us up to the turnaround, which will go to just add a hundred percent completion for that first section of the road.
Okay.
Um, since I don't know when I'm getting that permit, I wanted to, you know, be proactive and try and get as much
Button up as much as you can.
Button up as much as I can, and by doing the nine hundred to nine hundred and fifty feet, if you divide that by thirty-eight hundred feet of roadway, that's a twenty-five percent completion of the overall, a, a hundred percent of the overall total for the project. So those are the dates that I have for that. And one other thing that we're going to be doing is, so we have a third, you know, some third party data. We're going to do some core drills in that first section before we pave top code. And have it recorded by Allied, so it shows that we put the proper amount of gravel in there. We have the proper, proper thickness of asphalt in there for binder course. And we'll have them out there when we testing the top course, when we, when we pave that as well. So we have that paperwork when we go to, you know, request uh, yeah, release a sign.
And also a great thing to have done at time. So that you're not looking to do it later.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Uh, no, that's it. And I'll just continue my bi-weekly meetings with John and Alvin.
And then we're off for a couple of weeks, so we'll be back on the ninth.
Okay, so I can probably come in then.
Yep.
And then I'll do the work update for you guys.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Far enough into the agenda and to our continued public hearings. The first one is seven oh five, one fifty-seven Feeding Hills Road for Crepe's Tea House. Board Member Jessica will be abstaining from this matter. Let's try.
So I did receive an email late this afternoon from Mr. Steve Salvito stating that they were seeking to continue to the next meeting day, September ninth.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to continue this hearing to September ninth at seven oh five P M? Do I hear a second?
Marcus Phelps, second.
Roll call vote, Jessica Thornton, I.
Jason Brunel, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Thank you.
Oh, Giovanni Alsop, I.
Yes. Thank you. All right. It is now seven ten, next on the agenda is the continued public hearing for requests to modify and expand a large ground mounted photobait tag system.
So this particular item, I did receive an email from the petitioner as well, stating again that they were looking to continue to the next meeting day, September ninth, as they gather information that there were, were some requests by the Fire Department. That line item, quite a few line items that they had to address, they just wanted to show up everything and come to an active answer.
Did they also receive the questions and comments from conservation?
Um, yeah. I think I said that.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. So do I hear a motion to continue this public hearing to September ninth at seven ten P M?
Diane Jesba, seven.
Do I hear a second? Roll call vote, Jessica Thornton, I.
Diane Jesba, hi.
Jason Brunel, I.
Marcus Phelps, yes.
We have a couple more minutes to go. And just a quick update for board members. On the agenda, we have listed Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Chapter one eighty-five zoning modification discussion. Everybody should have received an email from Alvin on July twenty-fourth, the documentation that was shared with us towards the end of our last meeting. Due to some scheduling things, we were not able to meet yet, Alvin and myself with that team. But we are going to meet with them on Thursday, August twenty-eighth. And to really go into depth of some of the questions that they had and give some direction. If you could, please submit any input you have on that item over to Alvin, hopefully by Monday, the twenty-fifth, so that he and I may have those thoughts and questions in mind when we meet with that team on Thursday. Okay?
So what day are you, you're meeting when?
Thursday, the twenty eighth.
And there's information sent by Alvin.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's the, the presentation that they had for us and a couple of other items to to look through. Additionally, in our discussion items, we have seven seventy-one College Highway, the Dollar General sign permit application review. Mister Allen?
So you see, you know, from calling the petition. Yeah, getting the code, but she stated that she would tell her to attend the next meeting. Also, she didn't have any updates on the plan within a savage. I suspect.
That's Dorsey Roy. So we'll include that on the September ninth meeting agenda. Uh, do we have anybody here for one fifty-nine for share, or do you have an update?
Yes, on the call, Derek, you'll.
All right, Derek, do you have a large amount of information to share, or are you going to need to come back at the next meeting?
I'll, I can come back, I think that's probably the best case.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so we will continue this item on for the next agenda, and hopefully by then we'll have a more permanent site plan. Correct?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Almost seven forty, so.
So just to jump back a minute, the Crepe's Tea House has been continued.
Yes.
Until the ninth.
Yes.
And do we have any indication that they're working on getting the occupancy verse? Or those gazebos or whatever?
I haven't given any updates.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. I would hope when that comes on, the ninth, we'll have something.
I'm sure they're working through their process and will have whatever they can share with us at that time. All right. Next on the agenda is for seven fifteen. Excuse me. We have a new public hearing, I'll read the notice into record. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Section eleven, and the Town of Southwood bylaws that the Planning Board will hold a hybrid public hearing on August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five at seven fifteen P M via Zoom. And in the Town Hall at four fifty-four College Highway, Southwick, Mass, on an application by responsible and compliant Southwood LLC for a special permit and site plan approval to establish a medical marijuana treatment center and marijuana retail establishment at property located at six eighty-one College Highway in the business restricted zone. The property is shown on current assessor's map, zero five one parcel zero zero six. The applicant proposes to establish a medical marijuana treatment center and marijuana retail use at the subject property in accordance with the Code of Southwick Zoning Bylaws, Chapter one eighty-five, Sections nine, ten, seventeen, thirty, and thirty-five point two. Zoom meeting information is listed. A copy of the application materials may be inspected by contacting the Town Planner, Alvin Allen, at his phone or email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the matter should appear at the time and manner designated, Jessica Thornton, Chairperson, Southwood Planning Board. Do we have representatives for the application, come on up? Sure. If you put just your name and addresses for the record.
Right, Logic Thirty-One Carol Drive, Westwood, Mass.
I'm Peter Hendry, I'm representative of the architectural firm, Architectural Insights.
Yeah. All right. Tell us. Now, tell us about your application.
I am applying for the special permit to build out a recreational and medical treatment center here at Secidi One College Highway. I provided you guys with some information that Alvin guided me on to give to you guys. I do know one thing that was brought up. Mister Phelps was asking about a signal light. I reached out to Bowman and had a trip gen memo, I know it was kind of last minute, but I did get it to you guys yesterday in an email. It shows that it is going to be fifteen cars less a day for traffic impact. And I know family dollar was required by, John Goddard gave the information that family dollar, dollar was required for five years to hold money in escrow for a signal light there, and they were deemed to not need a traffic light. The only changes we'll be having to the exterior of the building is on the south side of the building. Roughly in the middle, there's going to be a new exterior door put in that will be for the drop off of material to the set.
And have you provided all of this information to Mister Allen, and this has been shared with all town departments?
That's correct.
Have you received an email confirming receipt and any comments from them?
Only from D W, John Goddard. And Conservancy Commission, just read a board. Outside of that, I haven't received any comment.
So you'll be looking for for that.
I did drop off the security plan and everything to the Chief of Police, and they, they got back to me. That was last week at the listening point.
That's good. We watched, that's okay. We need to get it from them, you know, writing that they have it reviewed and approved. Um, so that's something we're going to need from both fire and police. Are there any other questions from board members, unless you have more to add?
No, he just answered mine, I had questions about security. I'll look forward to hearing.
I, I, I also sent you guys a copy as well.
There's a lot of.
I know, there's so, there's so much detail, and I appreciate that, definitely. But it's definitely going to take a little bit of time to go through everything in detail.
Jason?
And do you have any question of this?
Mister Phelps?
I appreciate the traffic information. I've had an interest in that corner for a while. I would like to look a little more at the traffic. Uh, there's been a few changes at that intersection because of the development residential over on Tannery Road, the Greens East.
Yep.
Uh, they're probably feeding some extra cars into that intersection. And I believe it was Tractor Supply was the company that had the stipulation, they provide some funding towards a traffic signal. But never materialized, so the money was returned to them. And it was a five-year, I believe.
Okay.
Escrow account. And, you know, just trying to see if we might improve the safety there. Hopefully the the police, maybe the safety officer will give us a little feedback on his opinion on the traffic flow there. But appreciate the information you're providing, the fact that it will be less. I've been watching the current dispensary that's open, doesn't seem like they're generating a lot of traffic. It's not so.
Yeah, I don't think there'll be any big excitement here for the cannabis dealers, but should be good.
Anything else? Mister Phelps?
Yeah.
Mister Alsop, do you have any questions this time? Are there any town officials online or in person that have a question or comment for the applicant?
I just have something to add, Marcus just mentioned as far as traffic. Conservation did just review a road extension going from Hudson to Sam West, so that might actually, if it comes into fruition, might have some impact on the traffic over in that area as well.
Thank you. Any other town officials online or in person? Are there any public comments? Or questions? Do you stand to give your name and address?
Hello, Chair, my name is Timo, I have a seat sixty-three Woodcrest Road, Springfield, Massachusetts. At the rise more of a public information. It appears to me, and I could be wrong, that the address that is being used at six eighty-one College Highway is actually a little bit locked exactly the same. Six ninety-one is the address for the Dollar Store. And six ninety-one is sharing two addresses, Dollar Store and Confused. The public information would be, if what I'm looking at is correct, I think the legal laws would have to be re-advertized, then possibly, I don't know how to test anything else that's been going on to view this.
Okay.
I have a map, if you like, I could be wrong.
Do you have a specific knowledge of exactly which address this is?
Some, depending on where you look, so we put it in as both different addresses, better more correctly, because it was, because it was split.
Okay.
It's so it ha- it has it on the town.
Thank you.
It has it on the town as six ninety-one, but in it has it confused in two different places.
Okay.
But the town told us that it was six eighty-one College Highway to use that address.
So we will take that under advisement, and we will double check our processes and make sure that we haven't improperly noticed the meeting for it. And so.
If you go to that, it'd be great, you know, that the research that actually coming out at this time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Did, can I ask?
Um, you could.
Is that based off of just the town's address? The D I S?
Legal research, the reason I know we were an applicant for the R F I, that was a location we were looking at. And my lawyer, legal research, and all of a sudden, he has gone on and said, sure, correct.
And so we take the lead on that, make sure that we have an iterative process.
The advertised, we have till next Friday to get it on, first of October, I think the end of the year.
And if that is the case, that we need to re-advertize for a new public hearing. It's the process will move as swiftly. If that is the case, if it's our error.
It will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um. Yes, sir.
Andrew Dorsey, three five seven South Anthony Road, Westfield, Massachusetts. On the Town of Southwood G I S website. Six eighty-one College Highway indicates photos of the correct building.
Right.
Thank you.
The map that you provided.
Yes, I see that, so. So again, it's something I can't litigate here at this moment in time, so. All right, thank you. Are there any other public comments here in person? Any public comments online? Yes, please.
Um, so in looking at the security plan, I appreciate that information. Will you have cameras monitoring every entrance? Okay. Thank you.
Do you have a number of employees that you're looking to have on site at at given time?
I don't know the answer off the top of my head, maybe Mark who's listening in might know that answer.
Operational question?
Hello?
Hi, name and address for the record, please?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, hey, it's Mark Dupuy.
Okay. An address?
If the state your address, you said?
Yes, please. For the public record. A bad connection? If you're speaking, Mark, we can't hear you. Okay, so my question is both, what we are looking to start for employees?
Can you guys hear me now? I'm sorry about that.
Yes, that's all right.
Yeah, it's Mark Dupuy, one one six one East Mountain Road, Westfield.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, thank you again. Yeah, thank, thank you for your time, sorry, sorry about that, thanks for being patient. Um, I don't, I don't, I don't foresee us having more than like six employees at, at once there. And probably four to begin with, maybe.
All right. And do you anticipate that to change greatly when you hopefully are able to co-locate and add the medical treatment center?
Uh, yeah, I, it, it could go up probably about fifty percent, I would say, once, once that opens, so.
Um, because as you know, I'm sure from the application process, that while we allow medical treatment centers in the business restricted zones, that no cultivation is supposed to happen at the site. Um, and that it's only supposed to be repackaging, right? You've got plenty of space in the back there to do that. Um, I just want, I'm sure that we're not going to greatly affect our parking numbers, although I, you do have plenty. But just keep.
Um, we, well, we won't be, we won't be doing a cultivation, that's for sure there. So yeah, it would be more like repackaging and, you know, maybe cartridges or pre-rolls or something like that, you know?
Okay. But and do you have the pre-approval, the provisional license for that, or not yet, because?
We have the provisional for recreational, not for the medical treatment center, as of right now, because of the the growing.
Yeah, right, right now, it's a verti- it's a vertically integrated license. So if you want to, if you want to sell, you have to grow and you have to manufacture, but they, they just are passing a new law where that's not the case anymore. And as social equity applicants, uh, we're going to, we're going to have priority to just being able to do a manufacturing and like the retail or the medical sales area, which I don't know, at that point, they, they may not consider it a medical treatment. Which I don't know, at that point, they, they may not consider it a medical treatment center anymore, they might. You know, we don't really know what they're gonna do, because they change, they change all the time, but um, that's, that's really our end goal.
Okay, but you guys are ready to go on that as soon as possible, right?
Yeah, yeah, the one thing is they, they were like requiring, you had to have like a five hundred thousand dollars, it's sitting in your account to to uh, you know, to get that, or to get, and they're gonna drop all that, so um, we do also have a cultivation that Brian's working on, so worst case scenario, we're gonna, we're gonna tie that in somehow to it, so that we can, we can offer medical, because uh, you know, medical is something that it's really important to me. So I, you know, I think that uh, that's really, our main goal is to get open for medical, like, very fast.
Um, so then, what we will have to do though, and because you don't have a provisional license in hand for a medical treatment center, is that the special permit will be issued for just the marijuana retail establishment. Um, and then, when the time comes that we are ready to move into that, we'll have to do another hearing for modification. Um, but
Okay.
At that point, it should be less of a fall for you to have to do for that. Um, are there any other board member questions at this time?
Just a quick one, are you gonna reuse the uh, pre-standing sign?
Yes.
Okay. So we put in something up there.
Yep.
Um, just so you know, usually if, when repurposing a sign for us in that main corridor, if you are not changing the size of the panels, and you're just doing your replacement panels, usually that makes it an easier process if it's
We plan to keep it the, the same size that it is. Um, the only thing that was brought up from Alvin was the, the light up on the front of the building, we have it set up as gonna, they're gonna be lit from the inside out.
Okay.
You've said um, we may have to do lighter from the outside and shine onto it, because you guys passed a ruling. Um, but I'm, I'm gonna be right in that fine line of being grandfathered in, because the last building, by the time I get to the building, so we'll, we'll see where we land. On where that will end up.
We want it to look as pretty as possible, and less like a family, you don't want it to look like a family dollar. No, 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 you do not. Okay, that would be interesting. With no other public comments or any input from you gentlemen? We will.
Could I just say one thing real quick?
Yes, Mr. Phelps.
I just, I wanted to uh, thank Diane Gale, um, she really helped us out a lot on this. Um, so did John Goddard and um, Mr. Alvin there. He uh, these guys all really accommodated us, we appreciate it. And uh, we look forward to working with the city, so uh, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate you, this has been a, a project of mine since I first came on the board, so this makes me very, very, very happy. Um, with that in mind, do I hear a motion to continue to September ninth at seven fifteen P M? Do I hear a second? Roll call vote, Jessica Thor and I.
Thank you, Jessica, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Alright, so we will continue it as it is, right, and if we have to reopen, this one will get closed, we will open a new one, one minute later, but um, we will try to get that answer finalized before posting needs to happen on the twenty-seventh, so.
Obviously we file
Yeah, we would. Yeah, but not a new fear.
Yeah.
So much simpler.
Okay.
Alright.
I do appreciate all the information.
Alright. Thank you guys, we'll see you then.
There you go. Good night, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have under discussion items, two twenty sheet pasture road, request for site plan approval for a small scale ground mounted photo bolt aid system.
So, I did not speak with them personally, but um, when they, our secretary, secretary didn't speak with them, and I believe they said that they were, they were out of town, so they would not be able to uh, attend this meeting, so they'll be at the next uh, meeting.
Justin Haley here with uh, Suncobia Solar, I am a representative for this project.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Haley, are you ready to open and speak on this, or are you?
I am, um, a- and I do apologize, this project was brought to me yesterday, so I'm not too familiar with what's going on, but from what I understand, is we're attempting to put a ground mount in the front yard of this customer's home. Um, previously, we were told that a fence would need to be erected in order to um, kind of hide the ground mount from Aaron Circle. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So that is what our proposal is, it's, it's mainly due to the trenching that would be required to uh, run the conductors from the ground mount to the meter. So that is the ideal location, and not to mention, there's a lot of shading in the backyard, so in order to optimize the system, we are proposing to put that in the front yard. Yes, that is the proposed site. Uh, the one on the north side is the secondary proposed site, but that um, brings a lot of shading into question, which uh, i- in order to optimize the system, we want to eliminate the shading, we don't want to have to cut down that tree either. So i- am I understanding this correctly, that the only fence that needs to be erected is the one on Aaron Circle? Or is there one that needs to go north on Sheet Pasture Road as well?
We hadn't um, made that level of decision. Um, the application was kind of kicked back to the homeowners to say, you know, it would require a lot of buffer there. Um, and that buffer of a fence or plantings may very well add to eliminate some of the uh, solar lines coming into um, the front panel option. Um, and that in the back would be more suitable for the neighborhood and for the lot. I think that the majority of members would feel that way, unless you were to really come forward with a very specific plan that would block it. Um, I have been driving past this um, residence myself this week a lot, and approaching that uh, property from the north, it's pretty wide open. So, you know, even if you just had a fence blocking the driveway for Aaron Circle, you would still see the entirety of that panel and its structure um, on the main road, and I don't know that that would meet our bylaws needs for screening.
Sure, um, and another thing that was brought to my attention is the trenching pass that would have to take place in order to put that into the backyard. Um, i- in the proposal location in the north side, we would be trenching roughly two hundred feet plus fifty feet through the driveway of the customer. If we were to go around the west side of the home, we would be cutting into a lot of the root systems of that tree, and I, I don't know if that's good for the tree. I don't think that would be good for the tree, so that's another reason why we're proposing it to be in the front yard, plus the shading and optimizing the system as well, if we were to put that in the south side of the house and run the trenching through the driveway, there'd roughly be about ten feet that we would have to uh, go through the, the driveway. Um, which can be hot patched real quick and not, you know, obstruct the customer's ability to park their vehicles.
Okay, um, I would take it back to the homeowner and ask which avenue they would want you to pursue for the application, right now, we don't have a firm site plan in front of us, it's just a couple of suggestions.
Okay.
Uh, so, have that discussion about the necessary um, buffers that will need to be on Sheet Pasture Road, on the southerly lot line abutting the driveway for Aaron Circle. Um, and see if that affects the solar numbers for you, when it comes to that engineering, figuring out what gets blocked. Um, and then have the discussion, what's what would we need to do in actuality to do it in the other side of the property, and it's up to that app, the applicant homeowner to come back with their best, and we will evaluate it when it's in front of us.
Okay. I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you very much for um, coming this evening on such a new item for yourself. Yes, Mr. Phelps.
A question on the, the one that's in the backyard. It seems like it could move towards Sheet Pasture Road, I, we don't have, like you say, a specific plan. But looking at it.
You're right.
Reason why it can't move towards?
I believe that little circle that's to the left of the proposed ground mount is a, a stump that was removed. Um, that area right there is a little uneven, and it may pose some difficulties um, to constructing that ground mount system. I'm not entirely sure, I'm just kind of reading some brief notes that were put on the project. Again, I was kind of throwing this project yesterday and said, hey, you need to attend a, a town hall meeting, so I do apologize, I do apologize for not being fully prepared. But I, I do plan on, if, if we're gonna push this to September ninth, I do plan on being a lot more prepared and getting with Alvin and the customer, and trying to work this out the best we can.
Awesome, that sounds great, yes.
Is there any possibility that we could get a, two rectangular areas staked on the ground? That would show where, where these would be located, so if members wanted to visit there, we could get a good idea of you know, how the property is laid out, and if we're gonna require some kind of screening, what, you know, what is reasonable, I guess.
Sure, I, yeah, I could most definitely inquire about that, I do believe that is a possibility. I would have to uh, get with our master electrician, who um, oversees all of our teams that are out there. And see if we can find somebody with some time to go out there and stake this out for you guys. Um, and once I get that information, I can provide that to you. I think the main concern for putting the ground mount in the backyard was the trenching path. And not digging up the customer's driveway, or um, having to go through the root systems of the tree.
Alright. Well, it seems that there's, there's barriers to each spot, so
Sure.
You crunch the numbers and put the plans together and see which one is more palatable for them.
Will do.
Alright, thank you so much, and good evening, Mr. Haley.
You too, thank you very much.
Let's see, next on our agenda is a discussion with our conservation coordinator on three zero six Feeding Hills Road. I don't like it, um, but I don't like that side either. This, this is like in your face, right?
Yes.
All the time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Sabrina Poehler, um, Southwood Conservation Commission Coordinator. I have come in front of you to ask for your opinion and advice perhaps on uh, possible acquisition of three oh six Feeding Hills Road. Um, I'm not sure if you are familiar with the National Scenic Trail, we have a national park right here in Southwick. Um, we have two sections, section one and section two, we're the first two in Massachusetts. Some of the most heavily uh, traversed section, um, sections in the state of Massachusetts as well. Um, and we have only one official parking area in town for this trail, it is at Rising Hill, uh, Rising Corner. Um, and it is currently managed, I believe, by the Pioneer Valley Hiking Club. Um, there is three oh six Feeding Hills Road, for the longest time, I think a lot of people thought it was just owned by Mass D E P, so it's been historically utilized as a parking area
For all sorts of things.
And for all sorts of, all sorts of, and school bus turnaround, I heard, yeah, the Aglong uh, bus system, I hear turns their school bus around in that area. Um, but I'm not sure if you've seen the, the sale sign, it's recently come up for sale. Um, and actually, last year, they, we had Conservation Commission reviewed a project for a duplex um, in that area.
That had come to us, and we had approved it.
Yep, um, so I ha- I have approached the owner. He's willing to work with the town up until a certain point, he's on a time crunch. Um, but take a ba- uh, I'm gonna take a step back, I did submit um, an email to you guys two weeks ago, um, and if you don't mind, I can read it into the record, like, correct. Um, Dear Alvin and Planning Mem- Planning Board Members, as you may know, the town of Southwick is home to sections one and two of the National Scenic New England Trail, N E T. While official parking is currently available at five R Rising Corner Road, um, hikers have also informally used the property at three oh six Feeding Hills Road for many years as an access point to the trail. The property is a two point four acre parcel, and it's now listed for sale. It is primarily zoned residential forty with its eastern portion designed, or designated as agricultural conservation. This past winter, the Conservation Commission reviewed a notice of intent for a proposed two-family home on the site. However, the owner has since decided not to move forward with the development, and is instead offering the property for sale. In light of the property's proximity to the N E T and its longstanding use as a trail access location, the Conservation Commission has discussed the potential for the town to acquire the parcel to establish permanent off-road parking and public access to the trail. If the site is sold for private development, it is likely that this access will be lost. The next, the next designated N E T parking area to the north is located in Westfield near Robinson State Park. Conservation Coroner, me, is currently in preliminary discussions with representatives from the Trust for Public Land, the Franklin Land Trust, Appalachian Mountain Club, since then, National Park Service, and um, I reached out to the Pioneer Valley Hiking Club, as well as even Anna next door in Westfield, who's also the um, Conservation Commission Coordinator, they're interested in purchasing possibly a piece of property that abuts the N E T trail for access as well, um, and I'm trying to reach out to the Winding River, um, Winding River Westfield, Winding River Nature Conservancy, I believe is the full title. And I did reach out to the Southwick Land Trust as well, um, but back to my letter, um, I've also spoken directly with a property owner who has expressed a willingness to work with the town, however, time is of the essence and any action would need to be taken properly. The Conservation Commission would appreciate the planning board's input on the possible acquisition of this property for public access and conservation purposes. And um, I respectfully request to be added to your next meeting, and thank you for adding me. So I was wondering if I could get some input from um, this board as to do you think this is a worthy acquisition for the town? Or do you have any advice or insight on how I should get it protected? I would. Yeah, first.
Personally, I'd like to see it um, preserved. Um, because as somebody who has gone through there and enjoys it, I think it's it's a beautiful piece of property um, behind there, you know, and people do enjoy it, I mean, if you go there on the weekends, at any given time, there's a lot of cars there, people use it daily. Um, and I would hate for that to stop. Um, and while I respect the need for additional housing in our community, um, this particular place, I think, I, I'm a little torn. You know, so it's, it's kind of hard to uh, to wrap your head around um, entirely, but I think it is, you know, it's so beautiful back there, and people really do love it. We don't have a lot of that. Um, where people can go and hike and walk and enjoy that outdoors, um, and it is a beautiful place to do that. Um, so that's, that's my personal opinion on that.
Jason?
I think conceptually, it's good, um, I like the idea of the parking, I would want to know this. I don't want to get railroaded just because we really would like to, so.
I mean, there is a price listed on Zillow, uh, but I don't know the appraised price, the price on Zillow is um, a hundred and eighty-five thousand, I believe.
Okay.
But it's got two, two point four acre piece of property. Mr. Phelps?
Oh, yes. Is this a buts, is this the trail?
I do believe.
Yeah, I think it would be a worthy effort, uh, I don't even know if the planning board would be involved other than that you had, you you made a decision to allow a duplex on there. And I don't know what the layout was of that house. But yeah, two point four acres. It would be useful to have. I don't know if you could just carve out of the parcel enough for parking here and that. Rather than be the whole two point four.
And yeah, that, that conversation came up with honor with the Trust for Public Land. I don't know who if I would approach the current owner right now and ask him if he could cut out a piece. Maybe he could do that.
But if he for housing authority purposes.
Does look like it could be supplied.
Yeah, if it was owned by the town, that's a good point. The town could still possibly put in a house, some housing there. So that's another thing. I mean, time is of the essence. Right away, that's like a red flag. You need to have someone to sort of facilitate the purchase and then move ahead at less than glacial speed or more than glacial speed to try to get some public, you know, money.
Right. The Trust for Public Land could possibly do a buy and hold. The process takes about six months. But they would need something in writing from the town saying that they would, they, that the town supports the project. And especially so, so let's say that he does parcel off a section for parking. Who's going to own it? And is there going to be a conservation restriction on that? We can't use CPA funds unless we put a conservation restriction on it. So these are all questions that I'm, you know.
I would be in favor of an acquisition with the mechanism is
Yes.
challenging.
Yes. Oh, yes. Did you have anything, Giovanni?
I do sound sweet.
I mean, yeah. I guess all we could do is provide a letter of support. I don't know.
And I would rather have more detail of what exactly we're going to do and what the plan is before doing that. And my my biggest hesitation is the then what? We own it? Then what? Do we have to pay them to make it safe? Do we need to provide a better connection? Because right now people are just walking along the side of the road to get to the access trail. So now we're cutting down trees and right now we have a hard time finding people to pick up our trash at the gorge rail trail. And I don't want to bring in N P into this, but I think when it comes to public support for the town buying up public land for conservation recreational use, we have to be really forward with what the plan is afterwards and where the funds are going to be to maintain it. You know, like the Rising Corner location, it was the only location for the longest time, but look how long it took us to get it. So it wasn't a swamp for you to park in it, you know, so it's like just I think everybody here who's who's thoughtful on it and sees the good for it. There's also, we need to be mindful that the rest of, we need the rest of the public in the purse to be behind it as well.
And right now it's the hiking club you said is maintaining it. And it's clean. It's definitely, they're taking good care of it.
Yeah, luckily, people who traverse the N E T trail don't necessarily hang out for a picnic and throw their trash. There's no necessary, like
Drinking a beer.
It's like you have little through hikers. Yeah, there's no real water body where someone wants to sit and relax next to for the entire day. They are, I mean, I do know trash does get dumped on the side of the road there.
Everywhere.
Everywhere.
And right now, nobody says anything because tractor trailer trucks park there for an hour long nap. But as soon as it's the town of Southwick Conservation Restriction Area, any piece of trash there is going to become Facebook fodder. So it's just doing the forward thinking so that if we want to do this good thing, we have the plan behind it to say, we've thought of that. We're not just asking for the sake of asking. We have a purpose and a plan and and I'd be happy to sign.
Figure out a plan. I gotta figure out who wants to own it first. The hardest part. It seems like everyone thinks it's a good worthy, you know, project, but they don't want to maintain it and they don't have money to, you know, purchase it right away. So everyone's in the same boat.
We're ready to paddle with you.
I love it.
Plug the holes first.
Great. All right.
That's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your advice.
Absolutely. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you. We are going to move into routine business. And the first of our decisions is for six sixty-two A College Highway Host Self-Storage Facility. Everybody should have a copy of the decision in front of them. Mr. Allen, you should probably pull it up on the screen if I have it on as well.
No, we don't have it.
Oh, not everybody has it?
We'll have to read.
Yeah, we'll read this screen.
I'll have vision test.
A little bigger.
Yeah, I can too. Yeah, give you mine.
Renee is printing out some paper copies for us at the moment.
Oh, we're going to get
We get some hard copies that will
Soon.
Have it up on the screen for everybody at home as well. For some of us, this is familiar territory. For some of us, this is a new thing to review a special permit. It has some basic sections, starting off with procedural history. We have findings of the board. Terms and conditions along with the decision and record of vote pages. This decision was a combination of Mr. Allen and myself. So it has my review at the moment. There should be limited edits that need to be made, but I want everybody to understand what they're signing and approving. So real quickly, we'll go through the procedural history. The application was given. Those are the relevant chapters that we are applying to this. They are, there's site plan, special permitting, stormwater, as well as the industrial restricted zone. We opened the public hearing in April. We closed it at our last hearing. We have the application materials listed that we've all reviewed. A note about being mindful of the comments of the applicant and town officials and public comments. The current five members here at the table are listed as the voting members on this, where we have Giovanni Alsop designated our associate member. And he is allowed to vote on these as they are special permit. Moving on to the findings.
Okay, back.
Oh, go back.
Think Giovanni's name is their place.
We have it listed and then Giovanni Alsop Associate Member was designated as a voting.
Oh.
Yeah. Good catch. All right, our general findings, the address, the zone, the acreage of the site and the description, who it's owned by. What it is supposedly building. We're building a self-storage facility with the associate improvements and the accessory office building. We have it served by College Highway. The next section, the special permit criteria, these are literally bold, right, from chapter one eighty-five. These are the special permit criteria that we are supposed to find. We have our proposed use suitably located in the neighborhood. It's part of the industrial restricted zone and this is an allowed usage. We have the number two, using regards to the scale. And number three, we move on to the nuisance. We're finding that it will not constitute a nuisance. Number four, the proposed use will not constitute a substantial inconvenience and hazard to a butters or vehicular traffic. We have adequate and appropriate facilities, proper operation, including public utilities, refuge, site, stormwater management features and private septic system. The proposed use shall comply with the sign violations. Number seven, proposed use will comply with all special permit criteria. We're finding that the proposal will not create traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. Number nine, we're finding that there won't be a significant adverse impact to quality of surface water or groundwater. Ten is we are finding that the design provides for adequate methods of disposal of sewage and other waste. Eleven, we are finding that the design of the project will minimize the visibility of degrading elements visually. Or twelve, we have that the applicant has complied with site plan submittal and verbal requirements. Thirteen, we found that the proposal will only generate noise normally associated with the pickup and drop off of materials associated with the typical storage facility. Number fourteen, the proposed use complies with any overlay districts. Number fifteen, the proposed use is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of chapter one eighty-five. Number sixteen, a public good is served by the proposed business because it provides a service to the public as well as employment. Number seventeen, the proposal reasonably protects the adjoining premises against possible detrimental or offensive effects, including but not limited to air pollution, water pollution, drainage, flooding, noise, vibration, and lighting. The planning board has considered all the above referenced criteria and finds that they have been met, subject to any terms and conditions specified below. Are there any comments, concerns of the findings so far?
No.
No.
Marcus, you good?
Yeah.
Moving on to specific findings, we have the description more specifically of what's being built. The construction of the two-way access drive with the wetland crossing, the development of a single two-story storage unit facility with ten parking spaces, a small office building with three parking spaces and the adjacent septic system. We find that the proposal is for commercial and accessory use. We find that the proposal will not substantially detract from the surrounding area or the environment. We find that the existing structure is integrated into the terrain and surrounding landscape. We find that the proposed use is served with adequate water and waste disposal systems. Number six, the use will require the same municipal services typically associated with its commercial use. Proposed use and number seven will not place excessive demands on the town's services and infrastructure. Eight, a stormwater management permit is required and has been reviewed and approved. Number nine, college highway is adequate to carry the additional traffic generated by the proposal. Number ten, the proposal maximizes the convenience of the safety and vehicular and pedestrian movement. Number eleven, the proposed structures meet all the dimensional lot requirements and will allow for adequate access for emergency vehicles. Number twelve, the proposal contains adequate measures to prevent the pollution of surface or groundwater to minimize erosion and sedimentation and prevent the increased potential for flooding. Number thirteen, the drainage has been designed so runoff should not be increased. Grand water, water is recharged and neighboring properties will not be adversely affected. Number fourteen, the stormwater drainage system meets the site needs. Number fifteen, electric telephone cable and other utilities are proposed to be underground. Sixteen, the exposed storage areas, machineries, truck loading areas, et cetera, will be set back or screened. Number seventeen, the proposal complies with all zoning requirements for poke, excuse me, for parking, loading and environmental standards for chapter one eighty-five thirty. The proposed structures will not substantially be more detrimental to the neighborhood than any existing structure adjacent to the site. Number nineteen, the stormwater management plan and the erosion and sediment control plan are consistent with the purposes and objectives set forth in chapter one eighty-five thirty-six point one A of the Town of Southwick Bible. Twenty, the stormwater management plan meets the performance standards set forth in one eighty-five thirty-six point one I. Number twenty-one, the erosion and sediment control plan meet the design requirements set forth in one eighty-five thirty-six point one J. And all necessary state and federal permits, including a mast D E P stormwater permit, have been obtained. Any questions or comments of those specific findings?
Number one, remember back to number one. Do we need to mention a handicap? What do we call out in number one?
Do we have that number off the top of our heads? No.
As far as
An ADA accessible spacing.
I know we're calling that coming up in my template.
Okay. Let's put
Something about including whatever.
Yeah, ten parking spaces, including probably two.
I know, he said it when he was proposing and I remember.
We can fill on the plan with whatever specific finding needs.
Yep.
Okay.
So we'll put it with ten parking spaces including blank number of.
I think I'll skip these two.
You two. Move it down. Come down a couple.
So it says unit facility with ten parking spaces.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then for, yeah, comma, including blank.
It has to be at least two, I think. If there's ten spaces.
But what we'll do is we're going to look at the site plan after to ensure that we have the right number here in the specific findings. But so let's highlight it so that we, we'll come back to it and note that when we vote on this, there will be the inclusion of the correct number of ADA parking spaces in number one.
And number ten.
And number ten.
The use of the word maximizes. I think we should use
Number nine or number
A less formal. Number ten. The proposal maximizes the convenience and safety.
Which one would you comment?
It provides something.
So number ten on page four, the proposal provides for the convenience. Is that better for you?
Convenience, safe. Convenience, safe. Preventing for convenience and safety and weird thing. Maximizes just, to me, challenging. I don't know if we can say.
He wants to see maximum action, if he wants, if we're gonna use the word chat.
Anything else, Mr. Bumps?
No.
Okay. Then we will move to the decision section on page six. In view of the foregoing the plan board, we hereby decide that the aforementioned property is a proper parcel for the use under chapter one eighty-five of the Town of Suffolk bylaws, and that it can meet the requisite criteria, is therefore decided to grant a special permit, site plan approval, and stormwater management special, some special permit for the proposed use in accordance with the terms and conditions stated below. All right. The terms and conditions, um, the first section there is standard template for every decision we have. It calls out the fact that the structure is to be used under the special permit. It mentions the tract of land, and it shall not be altered or used except as granted by the special permit and as shown on the site plan, or unless it is modified and approved by this board in the future, special permit hearing. C is the entire tract of land and building should not be sold or transferred unless in conformity with the special permit. Two, condition of all approvals of this permit issued by other boards or agencies of the Town of Suffolk shall be considered condition of approval under the special permit. Um, three, the applicant should be responsible for keeping the drainage system in clean and well-functioning conditions. Four, a year-round screen or landscaping fence or both is required around the trash storage and propulsion dumpster. Five, the exterior lighting fixtures will be positioned for downward lighting. And all lighting will be used to illuminate only the site for the submitted lighting plan. Number six, an operation maintenance guide is required for the proposed drainage. Number seven, all Massachusetts Department of Transportation permits are required for the proposed curb cuts and driveway aprons. Or eight, failure to comply with any of the terms and conditions may render this decision null and void. Number nine, the special permit shall lapse on August twelfth, twenty-seven. Um, unless for, this is, has to start being built within two years. Um, number ten, the special permit and site plan approval should have a term limited to the duration of the applicant's ownership or control of the premises and shall lapse if the permit holder ceases operation or the permit holder's license and registration expires or is terminated. Number eleven, future improvements or changes to the use will require a modification to the special permit or a new special permit. On the following pages, we have what would be our record of vote. We have to vote separately for a special permit, a plan of approval, and stormwater management special permit. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments about the terms, conditions, or additional terms and conditions?
Sorry. One A.
Yeah.
One A. Can't we say it will include one self-storage building and one office building?
Yeah, include one proposed self-storage building.
And, and do we wanna say propose? I don't need, no, we need propose. What was the other one?
Office.
One office building. And I guess you could leave in accessory structures, I don't know. Maybe the bridge and whatever, fencing and all that.
Anymore? No? Did any board members have any other conditions or issues that they felt like needed to be included in this decision? In order for them to vote in the affirmative? Yeah. Right. Then, hearing none. There's, I think anybody here for the applicant with any questions? Is anybody on mine? Right. Then, other than the finalization of the exact number of ADA spaces in our specific findings, do I hear a motion to grant a special permit and site plan approval for six sixty-two A College Highway?
Diane Jasper, so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Jessica Thornton, I.
Diane Jasper, I.
Jason, run low back. Marcus Phelps, I.
Come on, I'll say bye.
Do I hear a motion to grant a stormwater management special permit, subject to the above stated terms and conditions on this decision?
Diane Jasper, so moved.
So I hear a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jessica Thornton, I.
Diane Jasper, I.
Jason, run low back. Marcus Phelps, I.
Running outside, I.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the decision as written minus the one edit finalization?
Diane Jasper, I.
We hear a second.
Jason, run low back.
Roll call vote, Jessica Thornton, I.
Diane Jasper, I.
Jason, run low back. Jason, I. Running outside, I.
That takes care of six sixty-two and College Highway. Next is our decision for Shaker Farms Hudson Drive Earth Excavation Special Permit Decision. So. All right, yeah, let's do that. Um. Hopefully I don't have to.
Pass. Speedy down. Thank you.
Thank you, Manay. All right. So this should look a little familiar. It's very much follows the same template, although because it is an earth excavation special permit, and also a wellhead protection district special permit, there are a few more conditions and items towards the end um, to give more attention to. The front page and procedural history is quite similar to what we just reviewed. Please take a quick look at page one in front of you. If you have any comments or concerns, let us know. Moving on to the findings. All right, the general findings are listed, including the property's description, and how we are only modifying approximately one point seven six acres of the earth excavation site. The special permitting criteria is listed. And again, the similar findings. Nothing majorly different, except for a couple of places. Specifically, number nine, the proposed project will not create a significant adverse impact to the quality of surface water or groundwater during and after construction because monitoring wells will be installed and logged quarterly, and provisions have been made for maximizing groundwater recharge. Everything adds, it was pretty good, and follows along. Number sixteen calls out that the public good is served by the proposed use of allowing the land to resort to its original use until such time that San West Road is made public. Are there any questions there?
I'm good.
Okay. Moving on to specific findings. Um, a lot of this was taken from the prior decision, and again, from, straight from our, uh, chapter one eighty-five. Specifically, number four, there are no proposed structures to integrate.
So item, item one.
Yes.
Maybe I wasn't present during some of the discussion, I don't know where a chipping machine is in, in one to two screening plants.
I think that was a, a carryover from the original. Do we still utilize a chipping machine on site?
Yes.
Yes.
And I believe the, the contractor would, yes.
Yes.
Screening plant.
Yeah. Anything else from one through six?
All plants, just as. Could be interpreted as some kind of planting, but it's a screening on machine, right, screening machine.
Oh, is that what it was supposed to be?
I, it shakes the, right. Material.
That does make sense. How did I read it that? Thank you, Marcus.
So we've put in machine?
One to two screening machines.
Yeah.
Moving on. Scroll down to number seven. Try to look s- seven through seventeen. Pretty standard.
Uh, number nine and eleven are the same.
Rolling down. Seventeen to now number twenty-three. Ben Marcus?
Oh. Sure.
Okay. That takes us to the decision. Edit that to include, um, the other two special funds. Uh, to grant a modification to an earth excavation special permit and site plan approval.
Um, the decision.
Yep. So the third line, modification to go to N for excavation. Comma. Wellhead Protection District Special Plan.
District Special Plan?
Yep. And stormwater management special.
Number twelve says, any deviation from the plans referred to in number thirteen above. Should it be a different number above, or it's thirteen under a different?
Have you moved forward to terms and conditions?
So it's number thirteen and, um, something, which is.
Number thirteen in specific findings? Is that what you mean?
Uh, number thirteen and yeah, number twelve, in the terms and conditions.
Yeah.
refers to number thirteen above. So that means thirteen and. Specific findings.
Once this number thirteen, does that referred to anything, so it's in the specific items.
There's plans referred here in a number thirteen. So that would be.
So we're calling, it's, we need to figure out where it's supposed to be calling out, not number.
Yeah, which thirteen, is it B? Or C? C thirteen is, the proposal contains adequate measures to prevent pollution.
So it's probably not thirteen, it's probably some place, isn't it?
Referring to the plan.
So, all right, so, hold on, let's just, any deviation from the plans referred to in procedural history, that's where we call out the plan.
Right.
And when it's stated, from January twenty-seventh, two thousand.
So there are terms.
Um, from the plans referred to in procedural history. Is everybody else good with the terms and conditions up until that point?
Yes.
It says it number then, number eleven. Five, number eleven, uh, specifically states the premises should be excavated in conformity with the plans of record as living and associate stage. So it should just have changed it to number eleven.
Okay.
About flying.
So it's eleven right above it?
Yes.
Oh. Wonderful.
It's like the bingo card.
Both didn't have the same problem, yeah.
Yeah, China, I think I did that.
I didn't get in the same problem, right here.
We'll get it when we get to it. This is, this is. All right.
Which is fun, yeah.
All right, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, we good? Everybody?
Yep.
Yeah. There's sixteen and seventeen. And a lot of this language is pulled forth from the prior special permit. Same with eighteen and nineteen. Number twenty calls out the hours of operations. Again, carried over from the prior special permit. Number twenty-one and twenty-two speak to the prime contractor's responsibility to clean up after themselves on the roadways. And if they damage the roadways. Number twenty-three needs to be edited to say number twenty-one. Number twenty-two. To identify that if the town ends up needing to do that, the prime contractor will still be responsible for reimbursing the town. Uh, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, pass it again.
Twenty-five has it again. Um, impact conditions.
Can't be number twenty-six above.
No, we can't.
Change that number. Is it nineteen?
It's probably three twenty-four.
Because the tax bill didn't move that.
Yeah.
Overall.
Yeah, number twenty-four. She just learned a lesson from before. It's just a number before. Got it? Yeah, alright.
Number twenty-five refers to what number?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-six and twenty-seven. Allow the failure to follow. And the special permit specifically, I'll call out for the applicant that this is now updated to reflect the actual timeline as proposed in our chapter one eighty-five, which requires a one-year renewal. So, um. That's the only change, but the procedure will remain the same. Twenty-eight, since the building inspector will take a look at that before we do those renewals. And then the following pages include our records of vote. Again, separated out. Because we have multiple special permits. Are there any further questions or comments? On the decision or are we all good?
When you were. So I and Giovanni were here.
Yes, so this um public hearing was opened on March eleventh and continued without discussion until the June twenty-fourth meeting, at which time both you and Mr. Alson were present. Yes. Yep. Your, your chairperson did that history lesson this morning to make sure. Put there. I did see it's in the findings. Alright. And then if everybody is good, do I hear a motion to grant, according to this decision, a special permit and site plan approval for Shaker Farms excavation?
Diane Jasper, so moved.
Do I hear a second, Jason? Roll call vote, Jessica Thor and I.
Diane Jasper, aye.
Jason Graham, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Ryan Also, aye.
Do I hear a motion to grant a wellhead protection district special permit? In accordance to the decision as written.
Diane Jasper, so moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jessica Thor and I.
Diane Jasper, aye.
Jason Graham, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Ryan Also, aye.
Do I hear a motion to grant a stormwater management special permit and subject to the above stated terms and conditions of this decision?
Diane Jasper, so moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jessica Thor and I.
Diane Jasper, aye.
Jason Graham, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Ryan Also, aye.
Do I hear a motion to approve the decision as written?
Diane Jasper, so moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jessica Thor and I.
Diane Jasper, aye.
Jason Graham, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Ryan Also, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Budowitsch. I'll see you soon. Alright. Next on our agenda is the special permitting decision for six seventeen College Highway. We open and close this hearing on July twenty-second. Again. Decision is in front of you. Front page includes the procedural. Get that up on the screen. Any comments or questions on that? None. Moving on to the findings on page two. Any questions on the general findings?
Negative.
Moving on to special permit criteria. Again, very familiar to us. Any questions on one through six? Then. Scroll down a little further. Down to nine through seventeen. Any questions or comments on nine through seventeen? Moving on to specific findings.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Does the uh parking already have a handicap parking space? And will that be maintained?
Yes, it has one.
Okay, thank you.
It has one. And accessible, yeah.
Okay.
Specific findings, one through five.
Number one, I'm wondering. Parking, um. There's uh.
If you're talking about the two parking spaces.
Specific findings. Just wondering there if we should just say. Asphalt paved parking lot. Uh, they currently have twenty-five parking spaces.
Yes, but further down.
Yeah.
In our terms and conditions.
Yeah, we're gonna allow twenty-three.
Yeah.
They have twenty-five, even if they eliminate the two along the street. So they actually have twenty-seven right now at the moment. So I'm just wondering if we don't even refer specific findings to a number. And just say asphalt paved parking lot.
Okay.
And cross out for twenty-three plus or minus vehicles.
Okay.
And then, like you say, in the conditions we call out. Specifically, that we're allows a reduction and only require twenty-three. And that way they can eliminate those two along College Highway. They have plenty of parking.
Yes. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We're on numbers, specific findings, number one.
Number one, just take it.
That one I changed, but um there was another one.
When we get down to it, we'll, we'll add it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's okay.
Alright, so two, one through five are good now, okay? Moving on in specific findings. Six through sixteen. Scroll down to seventeen to twenty. You good with the rest of those specific findings? Yes.
Yes.
Alright, next, our decision. For granting or modification to the special permit, site plan approval in accordance with the terms and conditions as listed below. Addition section one. Standard language, two through six.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm just wondering, if that storage place has ten parking places and has to have two handicap, how come this place has twenty-something and only needs one?
It's based on the use, the use, um, there's a table in the E codes that basically tells you per the use. Um, how many spaces are required for square footage of the building?
So, and I guess, you know. Street smarts would tell you, you probably need more than one at a, you know, an office or a yoga studio versus a a storage facility, but because of the size of the buildings.
It's based on square footage.
Great question.
Very good.
Um, terms and conditions, number seven through thirteen.
Number eight is fine as to the number. Just wondering, at the end of that sentence, we say including one and then whatever term you were using, AD.
Eighty-eight.
A.
Parking space. Wait for the rest. Everybody is satisfied with the decision? And do I hear a motion to grant the special permit and site plan approval for six seventeen College Highway?
Diane Jasper, so moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jessica Thor and I.
Diane Jasper, aye.
Jason Graham, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Ryan Also, aye.
Do I hear a motion to accept the decision as written?
Diane Jasper, so moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jessica Thor and I.
Diane Jasper, aye.
Jason Graham, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Ryan Also, aye.
Mr. John, you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, hey, Mr. Attorney John, it's not ten o'clock. Yeah?
We did, we did better.
Did a lot better. It's not even nine. I'm gonna roll.
Whoa.
Yeah.
Question, Jason, would I have them come back in to sign? Maybe they're in some trouble, unfortunately.
Oh, they signed that down and um.
Oh.
Yes, pick it up. Alright. I don't know, amongst all this. Still with us online, a couple people. Alright, so all of our decisions are now done. We have no wait, uh, A and R's submitted, right? Okay. The meeting minutes for April twenty-ninth, unfortunately, we need three members to vote and only myself and Diane are present at the table currently, so.
That was a long time ago.
A time ago, um, I guarantee you, you will have more to read in the coming future.
Oh.
It'll be fun. Renee's gonna be very, very busy.
She's on it, right?
It's not scare her away yet.
It's like, oh, no, no.
We didn't officially welcome Renee.
I know, welcome Renee.
That's planning board and staff member comments. Would you, do you have a staff member comment to share with us?
Just like, no, thank you for putting me on the spot, so.
Like, no, 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 no.
You have everything you need. You have pens and pencils and uh.
We'll fight for you if we need to.
Two computer screens and uh.
And knowing this group, you need lots of erasers.
Are there any other planning board or staff member comments? No? It's before nine o'clock, folks. I expect yay.
Congratulations.
Yay.
Congratulations, Madam Chair. You are a sweet fisher.
Thank you. Alright, with that, do I hear a motion to close the meeting?
The Jasper's so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Good night, everybody.
Night.
One, two, three, continued.